Council to order. Today is Wednesday, November 6th of 2024. It is 3:00 PM. Mr. Vino, let's see who's here.
Yes. Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason and Mr. Mendoza.
I'll hear.
They have a quorum present.
Okay, and for citizen comment period, I don't see that anyone has signed up. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. That's correct.
All right, none. Then we will go into presentations. Item one.
Oh, yes. Receive a staff presentation regarding the current status for American Rescue Plan funding and provide direction to the city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Our presentation this afternoon is an update of funding on where we have, what we have received from the American Rescue Plan Act. Sam Marcus has received a total allocation of approximately $18 million in funding since 2021. All funds must be obligated by the end of this year and expended by December 2026. As projects began wrapping up, staff has identified funding that can go toward current projects that could use some additional funding. Today, we'll deliver a staff recommendation and seek your direction on a final reallocation of funds. The next step will be for staff to bring back a reallocation resolution at a future council meeting based on that direction. I'd like to thank our Director of Administrative Services Hayden Meagle for his work to monitor and ensure these funds are spent in compliance with federal guidelines. We didn't have a whole lot of rules, and so he's really done a great job with making sure that we stay compliant. So without further ado, I will now turn it over to Mr. Meagle. Thank you.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hayden Meagle, Director of Administrative Services. I think you get to start the day with me and end the day with me today.
Yay.
I'm going to begin with a quick update on coronavirus relief funds and the American Rescue Plan Act funding the city has received. Today, we are also seeking council direction on a final proposed reallocation of ARPA funding. The most recent council action was approval of a resolution in August reallocating funds. Next slide. We are only a couple of months away from the first deadline of December 31st, 2024, when all funds must be obligated. This means we need to have a signed contract or agreement for every project and program. Due to this deadline, the reallocation I'm going to present to you in a few minutes is proposed to be the final one. Although all funds must be obligated by the end of this year, we do have until the end of 2026 to spend all funds. The next few slides provide an update on activities so far. The numbers have been updated with the amounts included in our quarterly report ending September 30th, 2024. This first slide is a graphical presentation showing the amount received and how much has been spent and encumbered for ARPA and CRF. The great news is that we have spent and encumbered over 90% of the ARPA funds. I'll briefly touch on the CRF funds, but the majority of the presentation today is related to ARPA. The first source of funding are coronavirus relief funds. When this funding was awarded, the city placed it all towards staffing expenses, which freed up $2.6 million in general funds. Over 70% of those funds have been expended, and since they are general funds, they do not have the same reporting or timing requirements as the ARPA funding. Here's a list of the projects funded through CRF. There's not been as much activity from these funds, and I plan to take a closer look at what is remaining once we get past the ARPA deadline at the end of this year. Shifting over to ARPA, this slide shows that we have spent and encumbered about 90% of the $18 million the city received. The projects listed are just a few that had funds spent between July and September of this year. You may be wondering why we have the last two projects on this list. I notified City Council after the last update that it may be necessary to shift a couple of projects to CIP and cover existing projects with ARPA funding. We have swapped the Gary Sports Complex improvements and the fire training facility with the renovations to the Price Center and the Euland Road Quiet Zone improvements. Both of the latter projects are still priorities. They'll just be funded through CIP funding now, but we needed to shift the funding due to the deadlines. Next slide. Here is the beginning of a list of all of the projects that were funded through ARPA. A more detailed update that includes a project name, description, amount allocated, amount spent, and amount available was attached as backup to this item, both in the packet and on the council message board. And here is the rest of that list. At the last update, there was some discussion about how difficult it can be to navigate the quarterly report due to the large number of projects. And it is something I have been struggling with too, as I want to highlight all that has been completed with this funding. Next slide. We are working on a website that will be more accessible, and one of the first ways to categorize that list is by grouping them by the strategic goals you have approved through your strategic plan. Looking at it through this lens, you can see that about one-third of the funding has gone to quality of life and sense of place. Economic vitality and mobility and connectivity have each had about $1.3 million placed toward them. $7 million has gone toward public safety and core services, and the remaining $2 million has gone toward environmental protection. Next slide. Diving a little deeper, I've created a few info snacks highlighting areas where this funding has gone. In quality of life and sense of place, almost $2 million has gone toward home repair or rehab and tree removal programs. Another $865,000 has gone toward programs for those experiencing homelessness. In economic vitality, over $630,000 has gone to businesses through the minority business stabilization fund, big grants, or small business counseling. Another $450,000 has gone toward tourism-related activities or community events. In public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence, we have placed over $1 million towards software, hardware, and personnel dedicated to cybersecurity. Another $1 million has gone toward the mental health clinician program in our police department, mental health diversion and support, or other medical services in our community. Under the goal of mobility and connectivity, over $1.3 million has gone toward railroad quiet zone improvements, including new improvements at Euland Road and re-implementing and re-implementing quiet zones throughout the city. And last but not least, in the area of environmental protection, over $1.8 million has gone towards stormwater improvement projects, and $150,000 has been spent on the implementation of the single-use beverage container ban. I will now shift to the recommended reallocation. As projects have been completed or we have looked at them further, some funding has been made available. Since we are so near the deadline, the majority are being zeroed out since they are either very near completion or finished and have come in below initial estimates. The total of the proposed reallocation is $238,571. I'm sorry, $238,571. Next slide. This slide has the projects and programs that we recommend funding go toward. We will go through each of the projects on the following slides. Starting with those projects with available funding. First is stormwater improvements. This item was to provide improvements at older city facilities to separate stormwater and sanitary sewer. Additional analysis of those facilities revealed that some of the improvements are not necessary, allowing over $100,000 for reallocation. Next slide. The next slide has a number of projects with fairly minimal amounts, as we are zeroing out the line items since the actual cost came in below what we thought we would spend. And I won't go through every single one of those, but you can see some of those are pretty small, going all the way down to a cent or 13 cents.
That was close.
But I don't want to send anything back. Next slide. The same is true for this next group, including the Arizona Senior Center improvements, workforce training center renovations, public Wi-Fi expansion in the parks, and funding that has been set aside for mobile and LED message signs. The final item with funding available is $24,000 from the implementation of the single-use beverage container ban. This funding went toward marketing and signage related to the ordinance approved by City Council earlier this year, and additional security that was procured for holidays and weekends around our riverfront parks. And the initial presentation that you had showed this amount as $89,000, but this is still a very evolving situation. And as we were checking and double-checking some of these numbers, we discovered, oh, there's only about $24,000 available. I'll now shift to discussing some of the current projects and programs that could use additional funding. You forward. The first program is an additional $92,499 for the mental health clinician. This provides for an embedded mental health clinician to be assigned to the mental health unit in PD to ensure immediate access to case management and hospitalization, identification, and prioritization. This is meant to improve the outcomes with people with complex needs who routinely cycle between jails, emergency departments, and inpatient care. The additional funding will pay for these services through 2026. We also propose to add over $11,000 to the tree removal program. We have been able to assist over 40 residents with the initial allocation of $135,000, and council reallocated an additional $94,000 toward the program in August. We have a waitlist of residents that we can go to for the additional amount. Next slide. The next item is an additional $115,000 for the Dunbar Park Restrooms facilities. This project was initially allocated $150,000, and as we have refined the project, it became clear that additional funds are needed. Allocating more ARPA funds toward the project will allow park improvement funds to be spent on other projects. The final item is an additional $20,000 toward the ARPA consultant we have been working with. This will allow us to continue the grant closeout process and ensure proper documentation of all of the expenditures made with these funds. The next step is to bring back a resolution with a final reallocation at your next meeting. The ARPA consultant and I will continue updating projects and go through the grant closeout process. We will continue to report to council quarterly with the progress that is being made on the expenditure of these funds. The direction I am seeking this afternoon is if council is okay with the proposed final reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and receive council direction.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I have expressed my frustrations and concerns since day one. I fundamentally believe this money should have been prioritized for direct, immediate aid to our neighbors. We are seeing across the nation the economic impacts of post-COVID, recovering from the pandemic. So I just want to name that. I think that's really important to name. I also feel like all of this, I appreciate all the work that you've done and everything, but I think it would be helpful for me to get a better sense of like the actual need, or like how did you come to these, right? Out of everything in the realm of possibility? And then my other question is, I have been voicing perpetually the barriers that exist to give our neighbors some of that rental assistance because it's using, what is it? What is it? But what's the funding source? Yes. So I'm just wondering, like, did anybody look to see what the parameters would be if using this, for using this money? Are they just as strict? Because my understanding was that they were not.
We're really at a point right now that, considering the deadline of December 31st, 2024, I was really looking at our current projects. The ones that we already have in agreement. So that's honestly whenever we were looking at that mental health clinician and we realized, oh, that funding actually doesn't go through 2026. It only goes through about February or March of 2026. I was like, well, no, we need to get some additional funding in there.
Where does the original funding come from?
It was ARPA.
And then, so for these, has any grants, federal grants, been pursued to help with that cost and like mental health cost? Because I know, again, throughout the pandemic, I subscribe to all those grants from the federal government. It looks like they're giving a lot of money for this, like. It's like if we have, we have money, we can get money from somewhere else to fill it, like why not focus on our neighbor's direct basic needs?
And I know that Chief is looking at that to continue the program past 2026, and he's looking at other funding opportunities for that. I don't know that he was looking for any through this grant period.
Who?
Chief Standrich, Police Chief Standrich, because the mental health clinician is in the police department.
Okay, no, you were talking about other grants to help with housing.
Oh, no, 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 no. It was the mental health clinician specifically. Yeah, yeah. So basically, I just, my hot take is in this last stretch, it's disappointing to not see, like, we knew these deadlines were coming, and if you're keeping an eye on numbers, I would assume that you would have some sort of sense of what's left over. And instead of like approaching it with meeting the moment where we're at right now, which is like a lot of community need and with some imagination and anticipation that this deadline was coming across, it's just like copy paste of existing programs, and that's really disappointing personally.
So another issue that we have with this is that the ARPA funding has different requirements versus any funding that we would provide through the Human Services Advisory Board process. And we've discussed multiple times that the capacity of our nonprofit organizations, it might not always be there to be able to handle all of those federal requirements that come along with it. So that could also, I mean, that also kind of factors in, honestly.
BR3T has dealt with the different types of ARPA money, and I feel like that would be like the only entity, right? So I guess my frustration is I have voiced on multiple different occasions that almost every day, there's people who do not meet the very strict, narrow parameters of this money. And we go around touting, oh, we gave all this money to rental assistance, give us a gold star, without sitting down and being for real that the most vulnerable and actually like the average person just going through a hard time, like the average hard time, do not qualify. Right? Like, it's very frustrating for me, and it's like shameful for me to go out in the community and be like, praise me, we did such a good job, when it's like, and who's benefiting from that, right? Like, that's all I have to say. Like, clearly, I've been saying this for what, like three years, and there's no hit? But I feel like it needs to be on the record. Once again, I'm voting no on all of this.
And if y'all want to do anything different, you know, this is a staff recommendation, this is, you know, what is being put out there. Obviously, if y'all want to do something different, then y'all can give us direction to do different. The only thing that I would caution is just in the fact that we need to make sure that we don't send money back by trying to ensure that it's something that we can get under contract and make sure that it's, you know, done by December 31st, but then also get expended by December 31st of 2026. So those are the only things that I would say, but if this isn't, you know, exactly where you as council want to see this go, then it is your prerogative to make those changes.
What is the difference?
Y'all, I was watching one of our recent meetings, and y'all were not turning your microphones on, and it's really hard to lighter touch sometimes works. Yeah, I finally learned that.
Oh, thank you. The grant money and the ARPA funding, is there a big difference on the qualifications for that, for someone to apply for that?
There's just more strings attached, because this is federal funding. And I hear you that BR3T already works with federal funding. Not all the organizations do, so if that is council's desire to push more of this towards that, that's something that we can look at.
When you say there's more strings attached, you mean further reporting agencies?
Further reporting.
My understanding of Sa Wu's question is for neighbors' qualifications, right? So the parameters allegedly that are set currently for the money.
Somebody's mic is muted. Open up the participant list. I did not get in.
Anyways. The qualifications, right? So apparently and allegedly, the narrow parameters on the application for BR3T. Some examples are, we had a neighbor who first she had to provide proof of income, and then she had to, she was like, there's one neighbor who was like in separation, right? We know domestic violence and family violence has been uprise throughout the pandemic. We know a lot of people are navigating the legalities of separation and having to maintain households with a different structure. And they're like, okay, well, we still need your husband's W2. And then, you know, you get that information, and it's like, well, you haven't been working because you don't have childcare, but like, can you give proof that you're going to be able to pay your rent within, you know, after this thing? And so it's like, apparently and allegedly, all of those parameters and restrictions exist that really disqualifies a substantial amount of our neighbors because of the funding source. That's what I've been told.
Okay. I guess to go back to Councilmember Gonzalez's question, there are there are a lot of different ways that you can qualify for ARPA funding, at least talking with our consultant. A lot of our city is in a qualified census tract, so a lot of the citizens do qualify for it. Now, does that mean that we, that BR3T would need to set up a separate process in order to handle our funding through that source versus another one? Yes, I think they would have to, and we've seen, working with some other agencies, that they've been a little reticent about creating two different processes.
But we've never asked them. We're assuming.
No, that's correct. We haven't. We're also less than two months away from the deadline, and I hear your I hear your concern.
I don't think so.
I heard it from you. I didn't get direction to look at that.
Going forward.
Microphone. Just leave it on.
Going forward. And I understand what the CM says about make sure we have four people, but sometimes I assume that all of us you know, agree, but we didn't actually say it verbal wise, that we want y'all to pursue something like that. What do we have to do to fix that? Do you want us just to take a vote, or?
I think that's something, if that's, I mean, obviously, we all understand on our side that really it is supposed to be the body. And that's what it is. So if we need to get clarification, because y'all are thinking that you're giving us that direction, then that's something that we need to work on to have clear direction in that regard. What I will say is I think that the difficulty, and this is something that we're finding even with the utility assistance programs, sometimes programs are written based on the ability to administer, and obviously, y'all know this because of the things that you do, right? And so y'all know this a lot better than some of us do, because we don't deal with that aspect of things all the time. But things are written in the ability to administer, and it's written more for the masses. But there are those exceptions where they don't fit in a tiny little box or criteria, right? And so a lot of the things that we hear, it's not necessarily, what we try to understand is, is it a systemic issue? That's with the design of the program and the criteria, and that's what helps us when we know that, hey, this is an overarching concern that keeps happening. Or is it a one-off because there's a unique situation there? And with that, that's why we try to offer, hey, let's get with Gleisel, you know, in our DEI coordinator position to kind of help make sure that there's that one-on-one assistance to really help navigate. So I think that that's the aspect too, is that we're not hearing ourselves from overwhelming number of folks. I know y'all talk to people differently than we do.
What mechanisms are you guys using to seek those answers, to seek that feedback, right? I would argue that our neighbors largely are unaware that they could even bring that to y'all, because they're bringing it to me. I mean, take five minutes, go to any Facebook community group, and you'll see every single day, Ms. Reyes, every single day. Look it up right now. Whip out your phone. Rental assistance, eviction. Like, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to do a quantitative whole survey to be like, this is a community need and there's barriers. Like, that's, it's like, I'm bewildered.
Because we have contractual obligations with who we contract to administer those programs, and then the communication has to happen between us and the entity that's actually providing the service, or if we hear about it some other way. I mean, again, what is, is our role to be all things to all people? And we're supposed to know like all of these things all the time? You know, we want to, we want to understand, and when those things come to our attention, we absolutely want to do that. But that's, we don't have, we're not out surfing, you know, the social. I'm not even on social, so that's probably something for me that I, you know, I don't get that. But for folks that are on social, they'll let me know, hey, I've seen that this has come to our attention, and then we do try to bring that. But that's not something that we have someone monitoring on a regular basis. So we do rely on hearing about if there's some difficulties, and y'all do bring those to us when there is something, and then we try to work through what those nuances are, what those one-offs are.
Yeah, but to talk about process, Mr. Gonzalez, you can see I have here what we're asked to make decisions on and a column for each person. I go around the table. Sometimes if it's numbers, you know, somebody will say five here and 10 here, and we end up with a six as I look across to see what we can compromise on. And that's what we do in the work session. Then based on that, and I give this chart to the city staff so they can keep up with that. And then after the work session, after we have agreed on things, then staff is going to bring it back in a written form, and at that point, we either vote for it or we wait for amendments. And you know, I sometimes come with amendments, and we've got them on the Jumbotron, and we'll vote on those amendments. Sometimes they go, sometimes they don't. And then we end up with a final document for our approval. So that's how that happens. So if somebody's not happy with what's been presented, then we need to see amendments to change that. And if we have a dollar amount, and you know, I always use $100, if somebody wants to spend 40 on something that we had allocated 10, then we got to figure out where that 30 is coming from. It's got to come from someplace else, like we do with the HSAB. So that's what the process is. Am I correct on that, Ms. Reyes?
Well, the problem I'm having is, and you forget after one meeting to the next, what we talked about, Heidi. I'm assuming sometimes that y'all got it, that y'all are going to bring it back up. Maybe, and I think you started doing this, after each discussion like this, we should, after that certain discussion, we should have a recap. This is what y'all want, right? And to make sure that all of us are on the same page, and I didn't assume that, like, he just said, well, I didn't get the four votes, and she thought they did. I don't know. That's where I'm going with this. I just want to make sure there's a way that whatever we discuss is going to get on the agenda.
I go through this at the end. Often, Ms. Reyes will come back and go through at the end to make sure that we've closed the loop and that they know. But even if I'm incorrect or she's incorrect, when it comes back to us in black and white to vote on, then that's what we're voting on unless there's an amendment.
Right.
So who controls the guidelines for federal funding?
The feds.
So does any way, does this body have any way to control what the guidelines are for funding from this ARPA funding? Or is it set by the government saying this is what it is? Or can we go in there and change those rules, saying, like, you're saying the guidelines are different, like the assistance?
My thing is there's a difference between what is allowed to be expendable by this money versus like what what, like how that marries with the process that we agree on with BR3T is different than.
How do we control federal funding guidelines, though?
In what context?
So if we're trying to distribute.
If they allow rental assistance, right?
Sure. So I'm asking, is it allowed on this?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess what it breaks it down to right now is the $92,000. Where we're sitting right now, because we're definitely short on time, I got you. Is it more important to have somebody like a mental health clinician who can help several people with that $92,000 for up to 2026? Or do we need to cut it down shorter and distribute that out, maybe $200, $300 apiece to several people? Which is more beneficial for our public?
I mean, that'd be difficult. We would have to figure out what way you're conceptualizing benefit to the individual.
That, that's great and all, but that, those are things that are.
Does that make sense?
It does.
No, I mean, you're, you're saying we're trying to break down the benefit. So we would have to have an educated source of information to do that. Not like, hey, this $92,000 is going to help 100 people based on pies in the sky.
We've been messing with this for a while now. Again, we're short on time. Okay? How do we move this along? We can't continue to postpone, postpone. That's, I understand what you're saying. Um, but we're at a decision right now where we just have to decide this is what we're going to go with or make changes to it. We have to have this decided within the next couple of months or by December. Am I correct on this?
December 31st.
Okay. Does anybody have a game plan for that before we make this decision? Like, do we know what we're going to implement?
And I, I think that's the key is if there's an alternative suggestion for this, it needs to be laid out. And you know, when we do.
Yeah, like how do you get that done?
When we do workshops, we've considered whether we need motions or not, but it's the same difference. Yeah. Whether you make it in a formal motion or four of you express, or seven of you express your views, it's really the same difference in terms of what happens at a workshop. So staff has its proposal. It, it's similar to a motion to amend, except that's not really what's happening here. We just need to have an alternate proposal that everybody understands. And then you would ask, are there four, four of you at least who support that concept? And then you give the direction to staff. But it, so it's, it has to kind of.
Okay, then I have a change, I guess.
It has to be laid out. So here's what I want staff to do. And the four of you go along, that's what happens. And it's not really an amendment. We're just giving direction to staff with a consensus.
That's really why we brought it to you as not only a discussion item, but we also bring you, bring it to you as a resolution. Because then that's formal action that you're taking and you're telling us that this is the formal direction you're giving us in terms of the programs that you want these monies to be allocated. And then we bring contracts back for what those, you know, what those agencies that we're contracting with and what the deliverables and scope of what they're going to be doing is. So that's, that's the reason that we do that, is we do it for formal action. And so I, I don't know what else we can do other than to try to recap, like we talked about. You know, maybe recap some of the stuff, which I think we, we try our best to do. Um, but I think what I hear more, uh, from Councilmember Garza, you know, you in particular, is, is on the implementation side. And things from when you're talking with neighbors who bring things to your attention or things that you may see that may not translate the way we all intended, right? And so like, we go through these votes and, and everything, but maybe the, the guidelines that are being utilized, that may not be at the same detailed level that, that council would look at that. And so that might be where some of the rub is happening is in regard to what the actual guidelines and criteria are that the agency that we're contracting with then is using to build those programs out. Is that what, is that?
True or false, the reasons that there's such narrow restrictions is because of the funding source currently. That's what I've been told. That's what has been told here live.
Yeah.
That per CDBG, those restrictions in the application have to be that narrow.
CDBG, yes. They do have very defined parameters that are more strict than ARPA.
Such as, is, was, I mean, I've, I've brought this up on multiple different occasions. Is there like a breakdown of that? Like because CDBG, CDBG money gods say this, this is why this. Does that make sense?
I mean, that's something we have to get with the, with the people who administer the program or with Carol to see what.
Because obviously, somebody had that conversation, right? Because we, the direction we gave was to make it as equitable as possible, right? To meet our neighbors where we are, where they are. Similar to the rental assistance that, um, the county squandered. Um, that was pretty, I mean, everybody, a lot of people should have qualified for that with not a whole lot of restrictions. But I was told because of the funding source, that it was very different from that federal money that was specifically intended for rental relief.
Councilmember, you're exactly correct. I mean, one of the, as an example, one of the parameters was because this was an eviction prevention program and they were only giving six months worth of assistance, that anyone that had more than six months of back rent would not qualify.
And that's a CDBG.
Right. That, well, that was one of the, yes, one of the federal requirements through BR3T, I believe the CDBG funds.
Because they're using CDBG funds or because BR3T had that set up from a different?
No, it was a federal requirement. So that, that was something that, uh, it was associated with the funding source, not because of the agency. But you're right though. I mean, those, those, um, those federal funds do come with, uh, criteria that sometimes it's hard for us as, you know, staff and you as council members to explain to people that are seeing agencies that have these funds available, not providing those funds because of one criteria or multiple criteria. And that's where I think today what we're doing is putting out a recommendation. And certainly if it's to all of the council to look at, uh, using ARPA, which has maybe fewer requirements. I mean, that's, that's why we're here. And essentially, as we move forward from this discussion into an actual council vote on a resolution, that's where that recommendation gets refined and finalized.
Right.
Y'all have heard the phrase, don't let perfection be the enemy of good. And I'm good with what's being proposed to get these funds appropriated before the, the end of the year.
Um, I am going to recommend, um, hmm, putting what was, uh, recommended for Dunbar Park Restrooms towards rental assistance with the caveat that, uh, we, our staff explore what the difference would be in terms of how, um, more or less narrow BR3T can be if the money is ARPA money versus CDBG money. And if there's a difference there, then I think that that should go to rental assistance. And if BR3T is able and willing to do that, I don't think there's any other entity who could disperse that money that fast. Um, and then we have a backup plan. If we don't, we'll put it towards the restrooms. But I, I'd rather have people stay in their houses because, uh, sleeping in restrooms, I don't even think that's allowed.
Can we do something like that where we have a Plan B if we can't get it all arranged before the end of the year? Because I, I mean, yeah, let's help people with rent. Um, is that possible?
Does the money have to be spent?
Yeah.
Or can it be allocated to that group by the end of the year?
I believe we have to be under contract with the group by the end of the year.
So they don't have to spend it. We just have to have it allocated and contracted.
Exactly.
But then does it have to be spent, spent by the 20?
2026.
Okay. And you see, you're saying December and I heard him say February or March. What's?
It's December 31st, 2026, when all funds have to be expended, correct?
Trying to remember why I said February or March. You're right, I did say that, but no, all of the deadlines are in December.
Okay.
December 31st, 2024.
I feel certain it could be, it would be spent.
I think, um, just speaking with Director Case, uh, yes, I think we can do that. We can look to see if we can put the $115,000 from the Dunbar Park Restrooms. We can discuss that with BR3T and see if they can set up a program that would be less restrictive than what they currently have with their current funding source. And if necessary, we can bring, we can bring this back. We, we're at the first meeting in November, so I think we can do that.
Because ARPA's got, um, not the same restrictions as CDBG, which is where they're getting a bunch of their dollars?
Correct.
I'd like to make some adjustments to that.
Okay, hold on. Let's, uh, let's make sure we know what we're talking about here. Let me finish. So if we give whatever dollars we give to BR3T for distribution through ARPA, and I know I'm saying this again, but I want to make sure everybody understands it, it would be fewer restrictions than CDBG, even though they're both federal dollars. They've just got different strings on them?
Correct.
And, and that will definitely be a question we have to ask BR3T.
We have to ask if they can do that.
If they can do that. Because ju- just like, um, community action, we have the one that, okay, the reason they're able to do it is because they're able to do that one, um, longer application. And doing nuances, that's why we're having to do the RFP to go with another agency that can administer that. Um, and so that's the same thing that we need to ask BR3Ts. Do they have capacity within their administrative?
Well, if it's fewer restrictions, we're more likely than if it were.
And I. Hopefully.
Okay. And now I need to go back to Mr. Mendoza.
We keep hearing, I, I get constant requests about being added to that tree removal program. You know, and we all know this is a city. We constantly have power outages in the videos because of the tree system that we have. I think if we're going to distribute, distribute out the money from Dunbar Restrooms, let's at least give some to the tree removal program, because there are people who have been on list. And it's older people who can't fix their house, who can't do tree trimming, who again, cause issues for us every single time we have a storm. Um, I think that's only fair to help give some of that money out, again, for people who have been on waiting list for a long time.
The only thing I will say to that is that there is already $94,000. That this $11,000 looks really small, but in August, you allocated an additional $94,000 to it. And.
I just want to make sure that, that, that one is funded pretty well.
Will this meet the waiting list? Is that how you came up with these dollars?
Yes.
I mean, that number?
Finish off.
Okay, thank you.
What about those who, I, I've got some people who haven't even got the waiting list also, so that we can go further than that?
Yes.
About how many people, just out of curiosity, do you think we could do with that?
We held 40 with the 135,000, so it should be.
Jamie Lee Case, Parks Director, um, it's just going to depend. Um, it varies on tree to tree. So if it's a very large tree, it's going to cost more, as opposed to somebody that just needs some tree limbs trimmed off of their home. So it could be as little as 500. It could be as much as 8,000 per, um, per person. So it just kind of depends on, on the situation.
Well, I would hope my colleagues would consider that also, because these are people who have been waiting for a while. And the more money we give to that, the better off they are long term.
Okay. And, uh, we're contracting this out with private companies?
Correct.
Okay, um. I've got two questions while people contemplate questions on the other. Can we go back to the grid? Um, on the message boards, I saw that there was money left over. Is that just that we got, did we reduce the number of message boards? Did we just get them cheaper than what we thought?
It came in cheaper than we thought.
Okay. So we, so we still have the number that we wanted? Okay, that was a question. Secondly, the mental health clinician, when does, we have funded through what time period? Is it the full fiscal year?
It is, no. It is through the end of 2026. So we will start.
Without this.
With fiscal, I'm sorry. That's, um, without this.
Yeah. What are we funded through now? The end of the fiscal year?
That's why I said February or March. I think it goes through February or March of 2026 without this.
Of 2026?
Yes.
Okay.
This gets us through the end of December, December 31st.
Okay. Because we have to have it spent then. Okay. That may, I just wanted to get clarity on some of those. Yes, because I saw us adding money and I thought that's either more time, more, more people, or extending it. So it turns out it's just extending what we have. I have concerns about the limited number of hours in a day. But I guess I'm understanding why that is. You can't, you can't do two more hours a day, right? It's just not gonna, okay.
And, and I believe in talking with Chief Standridge before, it sounds like the plan is to fund through ARPA as long as you can go through ARPA and then to try to have SHIB, um, where the person is housed, to take over from there. They needed the seed money. They needed the money to get it started. And so that, that's the plan from there. And I know a lot of communities that have some of these programs, one of the things that they're struggling with is that then there's the expectation. And so then they're having to absorb some of these costs because people are used to. So it's just a matter of us trying to work through the balance of, of trying to help people with what they need right now, but also understanding that there are decisions that this council has made that already have us having to operationalize, um, some monies after ARPA money goes away. Um, and how we put that into the budget and fit that in with all the other things that, that, um, you know, are prioritized as well.
Okay. And do we have, um, numbers? And I know we saw them recently. I don't remember if it was budget or whatever, of how many of our calls? Um, do we have the mental health clinician go with them?
I know Chief has that information.
I know he does too.
I don't, I don't have it readily available.
It was a high number. I just don't remember what it was. And then percent of calls would be the next thing.
And, and part of the reason for this delta is that this estimate for the service was put together over three years ago. And there have been some increases to the cost of the service.
Okay, um, so now I'll go back to you, Ms. Garza. And at this point, uh, I need clear what your thoughts are on these.
On what?
Well, you've mentioned what you want to do with the Dunbar Park Restrooms, but you haven't addressed the other three.
I'm, 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 I'm not going to, I, out of principle, I, I don't feel comfortable co-signing this. I think that they're all worthy programs. I just think the method that was used to put this forth, I don't agree with, so.
Okay, so how?
But I'm, I'm not resisting. I'm not resisting the, the value of the programs.
I, I, I get that. We, we have to make choices all the time. So my question is, what, where, what specifically?
My choice is not to comment on that. The only thing that I'm commenting on is moving the tree removal to the rental.
Okay. You mentioned Dunbar Park Restrooms first. Now you're saying tree removal.
Oh, my bad, the restrooms.
You, you did.
I gotta hang up on your patronizing tone. I apologize.
I'm just trying to find out where do you want to go? My question is to be specific, on each one of these four items, you said no to, to these as staff has recommended. So where are you suggesting those dollars go line by line on each of these?
I don't have any ideas. I just, I just don't support putting it towards that.
Okay, but.
Mayor, what is difficult to understand? The only thing that I'm saying to move around was what I already stated. And that's it. That's the only commentary I have on everything else. That's it.
Okay. I have you as a no on the mental health clinician. I have you as Dunbar Park Restrooms to rental assistance, probably through BR3T. For tree removal, I have you as a no. And under ARPA consultant, I have you as a no. But no specificity on those three as to where that dollars should go instead.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just trying to be clear, because that's how we got here, that you've got your complaints is.
Okay, Mayor.
You said we didn't have clarity. I'm working on clarity.
I respect that that's your perception. Um.
No, that's what you're telling me.
I just also want to make sure that the part about the backup, um, being the tree removal, if, if it's like, turns out it's the same thing, right? That CDBG and ARPA are both equally as narrow. Or there's, you know, no hits or BR3T can't do it. You know what I mean?
So the backup for the Dunbar Park Restrooms?
I'm sorry, just sorry, uh, Dunbar, that it goes back there.
That it would go towards tree removal?
No, 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 no.
No.
Oh, that goes back to Dunbar? Okay, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That in the, in the event that BR3T is just as restrictive with ARPA funding as it is with the CDBG funding, that it would revert back to Dunbar Park Restrooms?
Got it. Okay. So, uh, now I need to hear, uh, Mr. Prather has said he's okay with these as proposed. Uh, Mr. Mendoza has said that he wants to for sure do the tree removal program. I need to hear from Mr. Prather and, um, and Mr. Gonzalez as to the other categories that you have not addressed yet.
As for myself, as for the mental health, I like to keep that, uh, that's recommended.
Okay.
Tree removal, keep that as well.
Got it.
Uh, as for the restrooms, I don't have a problem with taking that to the rental assistance.
Rental?
I think that was it, Mayor?
Uh, no. Well, the ARPA consultant, we almost have to do that, correct? That's the administrative cost?
That's really important to make sure we're not putting the city in a situation of us thinking that we know that, yes, it'll comply, and then we have to pay the money back because it doesn't.
Right. Okay.
So it is a safeguard.
So you're a yes for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Oops. Uh, Mr. Mendoza.
I, 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 I'm, what I want to do here is, um, that's fine. We'll throw it back there and see if they can do anything for the restroom, distributing it out to rental assistance.
You're good with that going to rental assistance?
I, I, yeah, I want to keep, I want to stay with the clinician. Uh, I want to stay with the tree removal program.
Wait, wait. You want to stay with what?
The mental health. I want to stay with that, with the setup.
So you're, yes, as staff has proposed on mental health?
On, on mental health, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, with staff ones, we'll go, we'll stick with staff ones on tree removal.
Okay.
Uh, of course, with the ARPA consultant.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, yeah, you know, we'll just give it a shot and see if they can do anything with the rental assistance on Dunbar.
Okay. And you're good with?
As long as it goes back to the restrooms.
It goes to restrooms if that doesn't work.
That's fine.
And you're good with that, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so I will be a yes on the mental health clin, uh, clinician. Uh, I can say yes to the rental assistance for the 115,000. I will stay with a yes for tree removal and yes with the, uh, ARPA consultant. And so for mental health clinician, we have four. And so for mental health clinician, we have four. For rental assistance, we have four. For tree removal, as staff proposed, we have four. And then we have four for ARP consultant, that we, ARPA consultant.
For the record, I'm supportive of moving those funds over for rental assistance.
The rental?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are at five for the rental assistance, and you're okay with if, whatever reason, that doesn't work out, leave it with the restrooms?
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry to throw a wrench last minute, but I think if we can help people with rents, it's a good thing.
That's okay. We've had a lot of discussions since you expressed your, your thoughts, so we can do that. Okay, so that's where we are, Ms. Reyes, is all that. Y'all good with that?
And this is where, in all fairness, I understand, hey, we think y'all, y'all get this, but with these kinds of discussions, it doesn't make it clear for us. So I'm just being honest. It makes it hard. So I want to recap, just to make sure that we got it right. And so Dunbar Park Restrooms, we're gonna move the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to go to rental assistance, ask, um, B R three T if they can do a less restrictive program than C D B G. We'll have a backup plan of Dunbar Park Restrooms as, um, that backup of B R three T can't do that, and we can't get it under contract by December thirty-first, and then everything else is as, um, as recommended by, by staff. Do I have that right?
Got it.
Yep, just what I had said right before you did, so that's good.
Thank you.
But you clarified the B R three T. So... Does that, does that complete our order?
Yes, I believe so.
Mayor, now I see how you do that. I like it.
I do this for every time we have stuff.
I just never, I never really just look at what you're doing and...
Well, I used to scribble on a yellow sheet of paper, and then I discovered making these little charts makes it a whole lot easier and a whole lot more clear. Okay. And I send them a copy of this, and Mr. Vino's got a copy of this, so we're all...
On the same page, yeah.
Literally, same page. Anything else? We have no executive session today, correct, Mr. Vino? All right, then we will go to the next item on our agenda, which is question and answer with press and public. And my, my page, does no one signed up for that? Is that correct? All righty, then I tell you what. There being no further business, we stand adjourned at three fifty-one.